Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of July 8th. City Council meet for regular session Tuesday night, 6:00 in council chambers and City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at citymls.net. Batter up and join the city in the Community Blood Center for a blood drive on July 15th at the city's maintenance facility from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. All participating donors will receive a Royals t-shirt while supplies last. The Community Blood Center relies on volunteer donors to supply lifesaving blood and blood components to area hospitals. Approximately 600 units of blood are needed daily to meet the needs of area hospital patients. The time to donate is now. Register on the city's website. If you've ever been interested in learning more about the daily operations of our Lee Summit Police Department, here's your chance. The Citizens Police Academy is now accepting applications. Classes are every Tuesday night from September 10th through November 12th. Learn more and apply at citymls.net. Stay connected with the city. Be sure to follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Already do and enjoy the videos you've been seeing? Then head to our YouTube page and hit subscribe to see similar content. And Jamaican Jam is back. Enjoy the sounds of reggae and Caribbean charm July 12th at the Legacy Park Amphitheater. This event is free. Gates open at 6:00 p.m. and the show starts at 7:00 p.m. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or during reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is at this specific station is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5:00, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store. When you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. Is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working at the station that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better. And that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we had doors facilitated as many places as possible so that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we came and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters wear the big air tanks on their backs and they use those in a fire. We can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational. And this gives us the capability to do that, again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to be running calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear. Again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city. Therefore, we wanted to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3. And that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day and they split the city. And this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city and they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
Would you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Legions?
Father, we meet as a council in support of our community. We pray that you give us as leaders the guidance and courage to do what is right. Let courage fill our hearts that we may not disappoint those that look for leadership and direction to their concerns. Let us press toward the goal of being only concerned with what is best for our community. Amen.
State's in the middle of the public, which is serious.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? I now call the July 9th, 2024 Regular Session Number 8 to order. May I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Raeder.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlo.
Present.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Thank you. And I am pinch hitting for Mayor Baird, so I'll do my best to hit a couple of home runs. So it'll be an easy night. Now we will have the approval of the agenda. I see no amendments for tonight's agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? No. Well, yeah, usually it has the other screen. So we do have a motion by Councilmember Shields and a second by Councilmember Hodges. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. Now the approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion made by Councilmember DeMaro and we have a second by Councilmember Shields. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. And that takes us to Council Roundtable. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to say a couple of thank yous to our Parks Department for putting on Legacy Blast. It went great and I know it was touch and go with the weather right up to the last minute. So I'm sure you've aged a couple of years there, but it was a great show and we all appreciated it. And then also just to our public safety staff in general, I know the Fourth of July is not always their favorite holiday. I know they work real hard keeping everybody safe in the city. So I appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. So thank you.
Thank you. I will say Legacy Blast was a blast. And you did guarantee no rain by 9:00 p.m. So that was impressive. And so those fireworks went off while other cities canceled. All right, that takes us, no other round table, to public comments and we do have one. Ms. Volenwider.
Teresa Volenwider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. I'll start off again with this document. This is an email that I received from Bob Anderson, a licensed surveyor in the state of Missouri. "You are correct that Collins-Mullins South Boundary Line not extending south of the Quarter Quarter Line. That means they don't have any property in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 6 Township 48 North Range 31 West. If you would like us to make that line, we can do it on our regular hourly rate." I told him he needed to do it because his clients didn't seem to know where their property was and where it ended and where mine began. "I understand the Quarter Quarter Line. I understand the public land survey system. I know what the northeast quarter is because I've got a barn in the northeast quarter and it's on the parent tract that created the tract where Collins-Mullins have their three plus more or less acres of land." This is the legal description that was used for rezoning that piece of land. Again, at the end, you will see it says, "Accept that part in roads." And here, "To a point on the south line of said Quarter Quarter Section." That's the Quarter Quarter Line. That divides the northeast quarter from the southeast quarter. I recall when I was being arrested, I kept saying, "The Quarter Quarter Line divides the two properties. The Quarter Quarter Line divides the two properties. The Quarter Quarter Line divides the two properties. I'm not on their property." Before I go on, this was in the latest edition of the Missouri Surveyor. "Roads to be 30 feet wide. All public roads in this state which hereafter may be established shall not be less than 30 feet in width." I would certainly like to know who said this box, that this land belonged to Collins-Mullins. "The underlying fee in this area and to the center line is owned by Collins-Mullins." I'd sure like to know who put that there.
You cannot address anyone but the council. Thank you very much. All right, takes us to Agenda Item Number 5A. We have a presentation for conceptual economic development incentive request for Harley-Davidson Project. Chapter 100 and Community Improvement District Outlaw Harley-Davidson is the applicant.
All right. Good evening. David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning, Planning for the City. There's a procedural issue that we need to deal with before we move into the full conceptual presentation and I'll describe what this issue is. I need to go to my slides for that. So you may recall that we amended the, you, the City Council amended your economic development incentive policy to include this language last year. And the language says, "If a project requires the approval of a preliminary development plan, any intent to seek the incentives has to be made known to city staff and the city council prior to any action being taken by the city council on the preliminary development plan." So that's the new policy provision that we're dealing with. And of course, one of the first times we're dealing with that precise language is this project. So here is a timeline of the relevant dates associated with this project bringing us to tonight. So back in December was when the application was initiated. Planning Commission hearing on the PDP was in January and then the special use permit for the outdoor vehicle sales was in February. And then the PDP hearing was held by the city council and the first reading of the ordinance, both on February 27th and then the SUP hearing on March 26th. So both of the ordinances that are on the agenda tonight, the PDP ordinance and the SUP ordinance have held first reading and then the applicant made their incentive request. So we're obviously faced with the issue associated with the language that I just showed you, which is that the intent to seek incentives needs to be made known to the city before any action on the PDP. So this language, we were intentional with the language when we said, "Prior to any action," and "Prior to action being taken by the city council." So we accounted for the Planning Commission and its public hearing sequence and then the actions that you take here. And there's a number of potential actions that can be taken in connection with the PDP and this is something that I recall discussing. You may be approving a PDP. You may be amending a PDP. Both of those require a public hearing and then there's first reading of the ordinance, there's second reading of the ordinance. And so there's a number of different ways in which you might take action on a PDP, which is why we chose the language that we did that's in this condition, which is prior to any action being taken by the city council. So we clearly are in a situation where the spirit of this provision applies to the situation. They're making the incentive request after you've taken two actions on the PDP, which is the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance. And that's the intent of this provision. However, the applicant has made very clear to us that their need for the incentive request did not arise until we got down here in this timeline. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission that specifically, that led to some specific conditions recommended by the Planning Commission that led to some changes in their proposed business practices on this site that led them to this incentive request. So they're basically saying, "We could not have met your policy provision because we didn't know that we'd be making this incentive request until we got to this stage." That's their position. So that leaves us on this procedural issue with two options. One is you could, we could discuss this issue fully and you make a decision on whether you'd like to hear the presentation or not, given these facts. Or you could go ahead and hear the presentation, take this issue into account and provide your feedback at the end based on both the procedural and the substantive issue after you've heard their presentation. So the decision is yours, which path you'd like to choose.
Open to everyone's thoughts. Yeah, I know a couple of people have mentioned, but I'm okay with hearing the presentation. If you guys are okay, we can talk about the whole thing after that. Is that all right?
Yeah, that will provide you the full range of options. I mean, you can consider the procedural and the substantive and the whole request.
We do have a few people that want to ask questions.
Yeah, sure. One other thing that I should mention, I sort of skipped over at the very beginning. This is just a conceptual presentation for an incentive request. So when I walk through the zoning steps, we are just now at the conceptual stage. Whatever your decision is tonight, it's not binding on the incentives. If you take action on the zoning ordinance, that would obviously be binding in the SUP ordinance. But their request is to hold those if they're, if you give favorable feedback to the incentive request. So whatever feedback you provide tonight is not binding. This is just a conceptual presentation.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was just curious about, because I was on the Planning Commission when it came through and I remembered that we made a few changes, but can you refresh me on what those were?
Sure, so this sort of jumps to some of the later discussion, but I can definitely cover that for you. These were the conditions that the Planning Commission recommended in their final recommendation to you. The Ride Training Center will be open for business on Saturdays and Sundays only. Outdoor events limited to Saturdays and Sundays only. And architectural screening for the rooftop equipment will be compatible with the building materials used on the primary facades of the building. So they were, the company that's making the request tonight is specifically focused on items 1 and 2. And as you will hear from their presentation, the basis of their request is they are going to basically impose limitations on how they market on the property to address these adjacency compatibility issues. And that's precisely what leads to the incentive request that they're making to you tonight.
Okay, I'll wait and hear the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, so let's proceed. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. My name is Aaron March. I'm an attorney with the Rouse Fred's White Cost Law Firm. Here tonight representing outlaw Harley-Davidson, who hopes to be a new corporate citizen within the city of Lee's Summit. Why are we here tonight? We're here tonight because we have a business that is going to relocate somewhere out of its current facility in Blue Springs. And it hopes to relocate to this, to the land located at the northeast corner of Struther Road and Ralph Powell in the Chapel Ridge Business Park. With me tonight in the audience, if you have any questions about the operations of Worth Harley-Davidson or outlaw Harley-Davidson, is Mr. Rick Worth, Principal, and Mr. Mike Atchison, who's the developer from whom we want to buy the land. We had the land under contract. We didn't come to the city of Lee's Summit asking for incentives. We simply wanted to get the approvals that we needed to move our operations to this property. We wanted to recreate the model that has been successfully operating up by the airport. On the way to the airport, you may have driven by it if you've gone that way. Hugely successful operation and that is the plan that we presented to the Planning Commission. But along the way, our neighbor across the street had some concerns, had some objections. And those concerns and objections were taken to heart by the Planning Commission and they imposed conditions upon us that change our business model. And we simply have a decision to make. We could ask you to ignore the recommendation of the Planning Commission and allow us to do what we do up by KCI today and have a mad neighbor that we look at every day and have operations that upset them. That's not who Rick is. He doesn't want to be that bad neighbor. But he also can't afford to do the business, operate the business with the modifications that were imposed. It simply changes the economic model. I'm going to walk you through the presentation that tells you a little bit about who we are and why the changes are so significant to us economically. And if at the end of the day you say, "Yes, come back with a full-blown incentive proposal together with the zoning, great." And if you say, "No, we'd really rather not," that's okay too. We'll find another location and life goes on. We hope that we can figure out a way to open and operate it at this location and have good and happy neighbors and be a good corporate citizen. That's why we're here tonight. This is not anything that we knew about or anticipated until after the Planning Commission. The project site, as I've talked about, is at the northeast corner of Struther and Ralph Powell Road within the Chapel Ridge Business Park. It's been a vacant piece of property. And as mentioned in the staff report to the Planning Commission, one of the master, one of the comprehensive plans' goals is to convert vacant property into vibrant, active economic development sites. And that's what we hope to do. We originally filed an application for 34,000 square feet. The modified building is 34,000 square feet. So we're having to drop 4,000 square feet, 91 parking spaces, training area. It's 3.8 acres and it's a $10 million construction site. And again, we're shutting down the Blue Springs facility and we hope to move it here. We estimate that we'll have $15 million of revenue. And our revenue centers, where we make that revenue is from obviously motorcycle sales, service parts and general merchandise. We've been in business as Worth Harley-Davidson for 46 years and outlaw Harley-Davidson for seven years. We will bring somewhere 40 jobs, 40 full-time jobs, 10 part-time jobs, full array of benefits, competitive pay. This is a place where people want to work. And it's not just a, you come in and you're stagnant in your job. There's training provided by the Harley-Davidson University. There's professional sales training and service tech training as well. We think that these are the kind of jobs that you might want to have in Lee's Summit. We don't just move our business here, we move our hearts here as well. Wherever we have operated, we engage in the community. We've become a partner with the community. And these are just some of the local organizations that we support. Our current operational model, and the images are important. We have an event center, a large event center with a full kitchen. We put on concerts every Thursday night. We bring thousands of people through our facility because of these concerts. People mark it on their calendar, they bring their kids. It is a wonderful place to spend the night. And that's important because people coming to the facility translate into sales. Not just from food and alcohol sales, but people come to the facility, come to the store and they walk through and that translates into retail sales. It's these major events that we were asked to curtail. These Thursday night events, we could not have based upon the Planning Commission recommendations. We couldn't have the stage, we couldn't have the kitchen, it just wouldn't work. And that's okay if that's the pleasure of the council. Bike night is a major highlight as the slide shows, 1,000 attendees every Thursday. The original concept was, as I said, to duplicate what we had up at KCI. High transaction volumes. Provide a comprehensive event experience with food, entertainment. And the more people are engaged, the more that, often they come, the more that, more people are there translates into sales. Planning Commission said, "No, you can't have these major event spaces. Do them on weekends, we want to do them on Thursday night." So we were going to eliminate the kitchen. That's, if I can make, that's, the kitchen is the area along the top and the event space, outdoor stage area is marked out on the right. To be a good neighbor. I mean, we're happy to do that if we can figure out a way to have it make economic sense. We would have smaller events and we would bring in food trucks as opposed to taking, doing the catering ourselves. We can make our model work at a lower level, a lower scale, but it's not going to bring 1,000 people in every Thursday night. We're not going to be an event that people put on their calendar. So we were asked by staff, "Well, how do you know that having fewer people come and visit you is going to translate into fewer dollars? You're going to make less money." We know about it because of what we're doing up at KCI. And we know about it because of what others in our business do. Face-to-face interactions are critical. We have one motorcycle sold for every 25 transactions. So if we have 2,500 transactions in a month, we'll sell 100 motorcycles. It's a 25 to 1 ratio. This metric is widely accepted in the industry. And based upon that, we know that if we can't have events that bring 1,000 people in every week, 5,200 people in a year, just on those, it's going to change how many motorcycles and other retail sales we'll have. So no bike nights, we think we're going to lose 1,300 transactions per year with smaller events. We're going to have, we'll lose 750 transactions per year. So we're going to lose over 2,000 transactions. That translates to us, to 82 motorcycle sales lost per year. The revenue is $1,007,000 that we're going to lose on motorcycle sales and general merchandise, $325,000 annually. So we're going to lose approximately $2 million in revenue by changing the business model from what we had hoped. How's that going to impact our gross profit? Almost $600,000 a year in gross profit is going to be lost. That's an awful lot of money for us to say, "We'll lose that money and still come to this site." It was suggested to us that before we abandon the site, that we come and ask you, "Is it possible for the council to consider the use of economic development incentives as a way to offset this loss of over 10-year period, roughly $6 million in gross sales?" And that's why we're here tonight. Our decision is find a new location. We'd rather not. We love the location, we love the community. Or number two, reduce the project cost by modifying the design and operations by eliminating the kitchen, the outdoor staging area. That'll reduce our construction budget by a million, two. And our request here tonight is for you to give conceptual approval to Chapter 100, Sales Tax Exemption on Construction Materials. A 50% 10-year real property tax abatement. Today it's, the property's vacant. We don't know how much longer it'll be vacant. What we know is construction costs are going up. Here we have a ready, willing and able developer operator who has the financing in place, can't afford the higher construction costs that we have, is a known quantity. We're not asking for 100% abatement, 50%. So the taxing jurisdictions will get dollars day one. And we're asking for a 1% CID to impose on the retail sales that take place onsite. That'll equate to about $1,003,000. So with a million, two reduction in construction costs, $1,003,000 of incentives, we're at $2,005,000 compared to the $6 million of lost profits. That's over a 10-year period. If you present value that, you get close. And we're saying, "We'll go forward on that basis if you give us a thumbs up that this is something to work the details out with staff." So with that, should you have any questions of me, of Rick Worth, about the operations and how important bringing people in and creating more than just a place that sells motorcycles? We're happy to answer those questions. And Mr. Atchison is here, should you have any questions about the development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. March. Mr. Bushak, any other comments?
I will walk through the analysis that I typically provide for you at the conceptual stage. And I'll do this quickly, just so you have a sense of the numbers that are associated with this. So the way I think of this, and we've talked about this in the past, I think of this in terms of a timeline. So during the construction period, they're requesting sales and use tax exemption on the construction materials. Then for 10 years, 50% property tax abatement. And then for up to 27 years, a CID that imposes an additional 1% just on this store. The benefit to the taxing districts from the property tax components, these are the taxes today, very nominal taxes being produced. The pilots in the first year, so this is the 50% calculation, $72,000 and the cities is in green. And then over 10 years, $771,000 to the taxing districts with the cities portion shown here. The benefit of this incentive request to the developer, the sales and use tax exemption, about $336,000 by my calculations, developer calculated roughly equivalent. That's about 3.4% of what they're telling us is the total project cost. Then the net present value of the property tax abatement, so turning that 10-year abatement into today's dollars, about $563,000, which is about 5.6% of the total project cost. And then finally, the CID reimbursement at 4.2%. So this incentive request in total is a 13.2% compared to their total project cost, which puts them kind of in the middle, at the lower end of the incentive request that you've received on projects in the past. And then the impact to the city, I've calculated down here for you, which is the city's portion of the property tax and the sales tax abatement and the impact on the city. Then, just to give you a clean snapshot of what the incentives are, two incentives using Chapter 100, the sales tax exemption and the real property tax abatement, the numbers that I just showed you. And then the CID and its benefit to the developer, and that's the final calculation. So I'll touch on two other issues. One, it's sort of obvious issue. I think you kind of have a conundrum here. It's a very interesting question, which we identified as staff when we heard this request on the timeline that I showed you, which is, this is a very interesting basis for the request. So to put this in context for how I usually think of these sort of things, we've talked about how incentives really serve two purposes ultimately. It's to induce a project or enhance a project. I think everything that you've ever done with incentives ultimately comes down to one of those two purposes. So if I were to assign a purpose to this, it's obviously an inducement. They're basically saying, "We need this incentive to induce us to do the project, otherwise we won't do the project," which you've heard on occasions in the past. But the uniqueness of this request is there's no other ancillary benefits associated with the request that you typically see. There's no public improvements being constructed. There's no blighted area that's being cured, things like that, which you're familiar with. And so you have this unique reason that's being requested. But in my mind, it's a simple inducement request. Do you, or do you not want to provide the incentives to induce this project at this location under these parameters based on the restrictions that they've shown you? So that's the purpose and it's an interesting debate I think you're going to have to have. And then the second issue, which I can go ahead and touch on because I'm sure you'll be thinking about it, precedent. Does this set a precedent? What precedent? What are people going to request in the future? It's another very obvious issue. And what I've said to you in the past on this is, I'll compare it to court cases. Attorneys, we review statutory law, your ordinances, and then we review case law, common law. So all the case law that we follow is called the common law. And when a court decides a case, Missouri Court of Appeals or Missouri Supreme Court decides a case, that becomes a body of case law that governs that body of issues over time. And so there's precedent that's set through these court cases. And then the courts, to the best of their ability, try to follow this precedent. So the Courts of Appeal in Missouri follow what the Missouri Supreme Court says and that's precedent. However, those courts can change their mind on issues. And we've seen that with abortion as an example, with the US Supreme Court. There is precedent, that precedent can change. In this case, you're the entity setting the precedent and you're the entity that decides what measure to provide to that precedent in the future. So if you say yes to this and another party comes forward with a similar request, it's up to you to determine whether you want to follow the precedent that you set or not. So you're the court in this case and you get to decide how you act in the future also. And that's my advice on the precedent issue. And with that, I will stop talking and we can discuss.
Great, thank you. We do have some questions. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could you throw up that timeline again of when they went to Planning Commission and council? council?
I, so I put that up here. Ooh, that's the zoom. What am I doing here? I'm like Mr. Magoo trying to drive this thing here. Okay, here we go.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Okay. The staff, they went to planning commission, then they came to us for the public hearing. And there's, and the idea is that they didn't see this issue come up until, because didn't, didn't those conditions get put on at planning commission before they came to us for the hearing?
Correct, correct. And they did not contact us about the incentive request until after your first reading was finished.
Okay. So, was the hope that we would ignore the planning commission recommendation, they'd get to, because it, it just seems to me like they're, they're saying like, basically their cost structure changed, their, their revenue stream is changing, but they would have known this after the planning commission meeting before they came to us, right?
I think the answer is probably yes, if all of the people involved with bringing the incentive request to you had acted quick enough. So, I mean, I don't know how else is best to say it, and I, I'll let them speak to this, but I think it's a situation where the company is faced with a business decision whether to accept these restrictions or not. And then they need to decide whether they want to purchase the property or not. And so, in the course of those discussions, do we want to do this project? Do we want to buy the property? Do we want to start spending money? This issue came up, and I think it's probably fair to say that they didn't reach the point where they, they said amongst the various people involved, hey, let's, let's think about an incentive request with the city. That didn't happen until it happened. I, I don't know how else to say it. And they can speak to you on the timeline better than I can.
Developer or the council want to add anything to that? Or the applicant?
The reason it took 45 days or so, 60 days or so, I'd like, I can be flipping for a minute and say it's because I wasn't involved handling the zoning case, we would have done it immediately. My client, Outlaw Harley Davidson, contacted us a couple of weeks after the planning commission hearing. And by the time we evaluated what the cost implications were, what the implications were on their economics, could they make it work, they actually had to decide, did they want to, did they want to put, put forth the effort? And as importantly, we had to negotiate an extension of time with the developer and our real estate contract. We were running out of time. And we said, if you want us to come back and make the ask, we need to go through, lawyers don't do anything fast, or, most lawyers don't do anything fast. It took time to negotiate that amendment. We got the, of the amendment signed up. And then I immediately picked up the phone and contacted the city and said, hey, you know, can we get a meeting? So, it's 60 days, sounds slow, but real life, that's about what it took.
I guess my thought is, at planning commission, they saw these, these requirements, limitations put on about not having Thursday events and not having as much activity that would generate sales. And so at that point, why didn't someone pump the brakes and say, hey, maybe we should put this on hold while we take a look at the numbers before we go to the city and say, we want to proceed this way because we're not, if it's going to, if it's going to have that big of an impact on the revenue stream where it's totally making the project not pencil, why did they come to us without taking time to, like, because we have it happen all the time where they say that we want to continue this to a date certain of such and such, will we take a look at this again and see if this is workable? And at, at the planning commission, I, I wasn't a part of that meeting, but was there any pushback on these stipulations, saying that this is not going to make our, our business plan feasible?
What, what I know about the planning commission hearing, I know simply by watching the video and reading, and I think the conditions came about in the motion, so right at the very end, and there really wasn't a time to say, whoa, wait a minute, let's not do that. It happened, the conditions were there, they were added, and it, and it got approved. And you're walking out, if it was me, I'd be walking out of the head, the meeting scratching my head saying, did I win or did I not?
Yeah, I guess I, I feel like this came to us and there wasn't really, and you know, I apologize, I've slept since then, I have a toddler at home, I can't say that I remember everything that we had, but I don't remember anybody saying to us, if you approve it the way the planning commission recommended, our business model isn't going to work. I don't remember anybody saying, like, we need to remove these stipulations because this isn't going to be-
And there wasn't, and typically, there's not an opportunity once, unless, unless somebody obnoxious like me stands up and makes, makes a scene, and then you're risking whatever the, the chair's going to do.
But, but it happens all the time where someone will say, planning commission said we can only have three signs, but we really need to have 10 signs. Would you consider modifying this requirement? Am I, am I missing something? Mr. Bushak, if I'm, if I'm off base here, please let me know. I'm not trying to be difficult. I just, I don't understand why this didn't come up as, this isn't workable.
I'll go ahead and add, add a little bit of what I can to this discussion. I would have to go back, sorry. I'd have to go back and probably re-watch the planning commission to fully remember all this, but-
But not just the planning commission, when they, when they came to council, that they didn't say-
Well, so there's, I think there's one thing that's relevant there that I wanted to mention, which is, there was a version of those conditions during the planning commission that included time restrictions too, like only on Friday and Saturday and only during some certain times. My memory is there was a break and those time restrictions went away. So the planning commission's version of the restrictions, kind of to your point, I suppose, were more restrictive than the final version that I just showed you, which they did recommend to you. The point being, I go, I don't know. I think that's relevant to the discussion, which is, there was more discussion than just, just these conditions at the planning commission, but as to why, I, I, you know, I can't speak to that.
Well, fair enough. And, and there's anything particularly difficult? Sorry, is there something you wanted to add?
No, not yet.
Okay. And there's anything particularly difficult about developing this site itself? The terrain isn't a lot more difficult than you usually see or anything like that?
I don't think so. I mean, I, we'd have to talk-
I mean, we talked about, there's not really any public infrastructure, there's not some of the usual things that we would see, there's no huge blight, but like, there's not, it's not undermined, it doesn't need massive remediation of anything like that?
Right. I mean, I think if you had to, to boil it down to its essence, the, the incentive request is born out of adjacency compatibility. If I had to summarize it down to a sentence or a phrase, adjacency compatibility is the heart, is at the heart of this. Because the planning commission was concerned with just that issue and the impact on the neighbors and holding large events and the impact on the neighbors and holding training sessions and the impact on the neighbors. So all of this is born out of adjacency compatibility ultimately. That's, that's the issue.
And, and the applicant, the developer, talked about wanting to be good neighbors, about wanting to accommodate to the extent that they can. But, that again brings me back to, I don't know why this didn't come to us sooner saying, because like, they knew where they were looking at buying. They knew after those public meetings that are part of this whole process that the neighbors objected. So, when they're trying to find a way to be a good neighbor and seeing that they can't maybe do all the events that they would normally do, I just, I, I'm really stuck on this, like, why this has already been through, we've already done development plans and special use permits, and it's just now coming back asking for an incentive? And also why it needs, like, why did you select this space if this space isn't going to let you run the kind of business that you want to run?
Mr. Atchison just reminded me that, and again, I wasn't, I wasn't at the public hearing before the city council, but the conditions dealing with restrictions wasn't included in the ordinance. It came back later, after the public hearing and the initial consideration, if I understand. And when we were told that they would need to be added as part of the, the second and final reading, so they weren't there like they typically are. And that's when the alarm bells went off again.
So, that's the other issue that I just mentioned that I would talk about eventually. So the, after the PDP ordinance held the first, after you held the first reading of the PDP ordinance, it was discovered by staff that the three planning commission conditions were not in that ordinance. That was an accident. Do you have anything more to add on that point?
Yeah, it was just an error on our part, because we have been preparing draft ordinances at the planning commission level, and we did not add those conditions. But it's clear in the planning commission action letter that their intent was to add those three conditions.
And, and so, I think if I'm following the discussion, that issue is now relevant because they are saying that those conditions were not in the ordinance at first reading, and that plays a role in this request.
And I guess, looking at some of the photographs that were shown tonight, those events looked like a lot of fun, but I don't feel like that's how this was presented to us. Like, I, I feel like we talked about, you know, small customer appreciation things on the lawn. Like, I don't think we talked about 1,000-person rallies and that kind of thing, which are like, again, it might be fun, but I don't, I don't, when, when this came to us, it wasn't saying, this is the kind of business we're going to run, this is the kind of hours that we need to make it work. Like, it just, I understand there was some communication breakdown, but like, this doesn't seem like how it was presented. I mean, I don't, and I don't know if, if it had been presented asking for modifications to the planning commission. I'm not sure exactly what I think about that either, because it, I can understand why they put those in place. But I'm really skeptical of, of doing an incentive at this point, both because of the process reasons, because I think that it should have been brought up much earlier. And I don't want to set that precedent. But also just looking at the incentive, there's no blight remediation, there's no public infrastructure, there's no difficult terrain that can't other, ever be developed by another business. There's nothing that, that's, other than basically just can't make enough money, like, at the spot? Like, that's, that's all that I'm seeing and hearing. And typically, when I'm looking at the public benefit, you know, if someone is making, you know, putting in a big new sewer line that's going to enable the development of more properties in the city, or putting in a new traffic signal that's going to, you know, improve our public infrastructure, I can understand giving an incentive in that case because it's coming back to a public benefit to the community, but I just don't really see what this one is accomplishing. And I don't see, like, I don't see, maybe we don't need a BUT4 test in this particular case as a matter of law, but I don't see, like, that this parcel isn't going to, isn't going to develop that incentive. Like, it, it doesn't seem like it has anything that's precluding that from happening in the future.
I, I would agree. At one point that, I, I thought this might come up, the BUT4 test, we, we do have, in the case of tax increment financing, we have the hard BUT4 test. You need to make an affirmative finding that without the use of TIF, the project would not happen. And I think as a matter of practice, the city council has generally followed that approach for the two purposes that I said a while ago, which is, does it serve to induce the project that otherwise wouldn't occur? Or are you enhancing the project in some ways that wouldn't otherwise happen if you weren't providing the incentive? So if you take that as the basis, you know, that's the basis of the request. But I, I think your analysis is accurate, there's no other collateral benefits that we can identify, and so it's rate of return and profit to induce the project. It's pure inducement.
And you know, fair enough. Anybody can ask, I just don't, I don't see the benefit to the city. I don't, I don't think I'd be able to support this. And, and going back to when this came to us originally, I think my attitude was, the property is already zoned commercial, it doesn't bother me that this is going in there. It, you know, getting a special use permit to have, you know, public display or having your motorcycles out on sidewalk, sure, whatever. But my attitude was basically, it's already zoned commercial, it's fine if it goes in there, but not, I am desperate to get this business in here, what can we do to make that happen? Like, so I don't, I don't see the, kind of like, this is a, you know, critical business in a critical spot that we're trying to bring in to make our city better. It was just like, okay, that's fine, if you don't need me to give you money to do it. If you can make a profit putting a business there, go for it. But if the answer is you can't, I don't think that we need to subsidize that. So, I was very long-winded, I appreciate you answering all my questions, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, I, I mean, I'll just get quick and to the point. So first of all, with the, the new page 13, number four, that you guys put in, good job. I, I like that a lot. I understand with some of the mishaps that happened and the way it all played out, why it came forward anyways, that's fine. But for me, to give any kind of incentive, I have to have a public good. So I have to, there has to be some kind of infrastructure put in, or some kind of remediation happening, or something. I just, I cannot give any kind of incentive without there being some kind of public good for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMoral.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This, this on its, on its, itself is, it would, would, would set a, a very dangerous precedent. And, and I understand the time lapse, or, or the, the time constraints to, to effectively bring forth a, a request for incentive. But ju, just even the timeline here, there was a month between the planning commission and the first reading on the city council. And the request, although the request did not come in for what, three, two, two and a half months later, or two months later. And, and that's, that's all, you know, understandable, but I, I'm looking at the side of, this would be a dangerous precedent, there's, there's no, there's no blight mitigation, there's no infrastructure, there's no actual benefit to the public, bottom line. I understand the, the, the loss in, in, I forget what it was called, contacts or whatever, and that, that, you know, that, that's, I realize, that's real money, that's real bottom line figures, but I, I just, yeah. There has to be some benefit to the, the general public for an incentive like this, especially the property tax request, to be, be accepted. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Kind of hear from everyone if we can. Just, thumbs up, thumbs down, any kind of input. Councilmember Reader.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As I indicated before, I was on the planning commission when this project came through, and I've slept too, a few times before, I mean, since then. But I didn't really remember, I do remember you talking about the events that you were going to have, and I do remember that we put the restriction on a Saturday, Sunday, for the benefit of the businesses around there, because they're offices and, and doctors' offices and lawyer offices and that type of thing. I didn't remember the huge, huge event, and so it's kind of made me second guess that over the fact that, is that the place for those type of events to begin with? But with that being said, I am very worried about changing a precedent. That's a good precedent. It's, it's, it's a good, it is a good statements that were put in the, in the economic development policy with good reason. I believe that they're valid, and I think they need to hold up. Also, I don't think that the, as everyone else has spoken, the, it has to be for the good of the people, it has to be a good, should be good for them, the residents of Lee Summit as a whole. And there should be benefit, many benefits, other than just trying to offset costs. So, even though I struggled saying what I was going to say, basically, I'm, I, I won't be voting for incentives. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I don't want to beat a dead horse. Everything that I had written down is exactly what Councilmember Shields had said, and so I agree fully with what she said. She made some great points. And I agree, we don't want to set the precedence, but at the same time, I want to make sure you know that we're not saying that your business would not be a benefit to our city, because I think it absolutely would. So just hear us when we say, maybe the location, which, I mean, you've obviously got a great person that you would be buying land from, but this is not a knock on your business. So I hope that's not what you're hearing, but just, we want to be good stewards to our constituents, and that's the sole basis of where these opinions are coming from. That's it.
Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. Well, not to be too repetitive, but, and honestly, I don't mind the CID even as much as all of the incentives. But I, I think that your business would be a benefit to Lee Summit, I just don't necessarily agree with the incentives. So, yeah. But hopefully, something can work out and maybe you can still find somewhere to stay in Lee Summit. I know that he had mentioned that this might determine, this might determine whether or not you come here or not. But, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think you've gotten feedback for the majority of the council colleagues up here. I think you understand, I won't repeat what's been said already, that it is the majority of the body up here. I think it's important to point out though, emphasize a couple- I think it's important to point out, though, emphasize a couple things. I couldn't have said it any better than Councilmember Hodges, and Councilmember Pryor also alluded to it. It's not your business. We appreciate you all wanting to come in and invest in this community. It's a great location. It's just, this council's been very consistent in how we analyze and work with staff to issue incentives, economic development incentives. And I think we take a lot of pride in that, just to be consistent. And taking this kind of action, we keep hearing the word precedent. I think it would probably deviate from that. And I think that's what you're hearing up here. We greatly welcome you all wanting to invest. The 40 full-time jobs and 10 part-time jobs, the new revenue, you all wanting to come in our community, that goes without saying. Or hopefully, you can find another site, hopefully from the same developer. But that's just a side comment. But, yeah, at this point, you heard, the council's just not wanting to deviate from our standard practice of how we view incentives. So, thank you. Unless there's any other questions or comments. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay. Next agenda item is a resolution. Will the clerk please read Resolution Number 24-10?
Resolution Number 24-10, a resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the Cedar Creek Community Improvement District.
Great, thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember DeMoro and a second by Councilmember Shields. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. The resolution is approved. Thank you. Takes us to... All right, we're moving along. Item 7A through 7C, proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. Can we have Councilmember Hodges, will you please read Bill Number 24-119?
Thank you. I move to second reading Bill Number 24-119, an ordinance approving the award of RFP Number 2024-003 to US Bank NA to provide banking services, merchant services, and purchasing card services for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals, and authorizing the city manager to execute agreements to secure the same buy-in on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Hodges and a second from Councilmember DeMoro for Bill Number 24-119. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. The bill moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill Number 24-119 for adoption?
I move for adoption of Bill Number 24-119, an ordinance approving the award of RFP Number 2024-003 to US Bank NA to provide banking services, merchant services, and purchasing card services for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals, and authorizing the city manager to execute agreements to secure the same buy-in on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Hodges and a second by Councilmember Carlisle. I see no discussion. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Bill Number 24-119 is adopted unanimously. Takes us to Item 7B. Councilmember DeMoro, will you please read Bill Number 24-120?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to advance the second reading Bill Number 24-120, an ordinance approving the award of RFP Number 2024-061 for the online and IVR payment notification system to Paymentis Corporation, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same buy-in on behalf of the city.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilmember DeMoro and a second by Councilmember Hodges for second reading of Bill Number 24-120. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. That moves to second reading unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember DeMoro, will you please read Bill Number 24-120 for adoption?
I move for adoption Bill Number 24-120, an ordinance approving the award of RFP Number 2024-061 for the online and IVR payment and notification system to Paymentis Corporation, and authorizing the city manager to execute agreements for the same buy-in on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Have a motion from Councilmember DeMoro and a second from Councilmember Hodges to adopt Bill Number 24-120. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Bill Number 24-120 is adopted unanimously. Councilmember Shields, will you please Bill Number 24-121?
Thank you. I move for second reading Bill Number 24-121, an ordinance approving a term extension until September 30, 2024, for the public service agreement in between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and downtown Lee Summit Main Street for the purposes stated in the agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute the same buy-in on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Shields and a second from Councilmember Carlisle for second reading of Bill Number 24-121. Any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Shields.
So, obviously, this is forwarded from Finance and Budget Committee. This is, since the current PSA with Downtown Main Street expires at the end of this month, this is a temporary extension so that they can continue receiving funding while we discuss what their funding should look like in the coming years, since the council wanted to have a full presentation from them about their funding requests and also look at them together in context with the new DMO and the possible future EDC funding. So I just wanted to give that background. And then also, at Finance and Budget, we amended the extension to fix the dollar amount. It erroneously shows $1,500 when it's supposed to be $5,000 per month is their current funding level. And I think that wasn't fixed in the attachments, so I wasn't sure if we needed to have another amendment or if, because I know, since we amended it in committee, it should have carried forward, correct?
Yes, yes, it should. And the version I have here still shows the $1,500. So we need to...
How do you want to handle that?
Yes. Yes, you could act by amendment to this ordinance.
Go ahead and...
Sure, I would move to amend the ordinance to replace all instances of $1,500 with $5,000 per month.
Thank you.
Motion's been made. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please, or please cast your vote. Are we gonna do roll call? Please record the vote. That amendment motion passes unanimously, so we go back to the original. Motion's been made. Any further discussion? We have a motion made by Councilmember Shields and a second by Councilmember Carlisle.
But this is still for second reading, right? Okay. Sorry, it just updated.
No more questions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Bill Number 24-121 passes unanimously. Yes, please.
I now move for adoption of Bill Number 24-121, an ordinance approving a term extension until September 30, 2024, for public service agreement in between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and downtown Lee Summit Main Street for the purposes stated in the agreement, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same buy-in on behalf of the city.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Shields and a second by Councilmember Carlisle. Any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Bill Number 24-121 passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to agenda item number 8A, is that right? All right. Councilmember Rader, will you please read Bill Number 24-122?
Thank you. I move to advance to second reading Bill Number 24-122, an ordinance vacating the portion of certain easement located at 2214 Southwest Osage Drive in the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Rader for a second, excuse me, in a second from Councilmember Carlisle to advance Bill Number 24-122 for second reading. Any discussion? I see your name's still on there. I didn't clear. You good? Kind of stuck there. But, see, no further discussion? Just, please cast your vote when we're ready. Please record the vote. Bill Number 24-122 is advanced to second reading unanimously. Thank you. All right. Takes us to proposed ordinances.
Mayor Protem, for these last two ordinances, we discussed this with the applicant before the meeting started, and they've requested to not, that you not act on these ordinances based on the feedback you provided tonight.
Oh, okay. So do we need to go ahead and read them?
There's no particular action that's needed. Based on the discussions we've had at this point, they've indicated to me that they will not be moving forward with the project. And so there's no need to pass these ordinances. However, if they come back with yet another request, you know, we may revisit the issue. But what we've been told is they won't be proceeding, so please don't act on the ordinances.
Okay, great. Basically, they've withdrawn.
Yeah, so based on the discussion that's happened up to this point, I'm thinking of...
Oh, just to be correct...
I feel like I'm kind of hiding behind the chair back there. Yeah, so there's two considerations here.
Should you go ahead and state the question, just while you're up there?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So we don't, my question was, do we need to table these or anything?
No, I don't think you need to take any action. And there's two reasons. One is what I said. The applicant has clearly indicated to me they don't wish to proceed with the project. So don't act on these two ordinances if it was unfavorable feedback. And secondly, some of the discussion we've had is, if this project moves forward in any way, we may need to redo the zoning hearings, given all of the complications that have happened up to this point, specifically because of the issue I identified for you, which is adjacency compatibility. And that, you know, that's at the heart of the issue, if this project ever moves forward in any fashion. So for those reasons, I think just taking no action is appropriate.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. All right, so that expedites it even more. That takes us to committee reports. How about that? Anyone? All right, Councilmember Shields.
No.
Oh, she's still stuck on there. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a reminder, we will have a CEDC meeting tomorrow at 4:00 PM here.
Try not to look at you. Councilmember DeMoro.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yesterday evening, we had a Public Works meeting. And professionally chaired by the Vice Chairman, I have to mention, he did a very good job. But what I wanted to mention is that one of the items that was discussed last night at the Public Works is the renaming of the Lee Summit Municipal Airport. And basically, we've talked about this before. I think, I know at Public Works, I think actually at CEDC too, that municipal, the word municipal denotes a smaller, less services or no services airport. So the discussion was had. And Mr. Arrington actually told us that the process could take up to two years. So I would ask my fellow colleagues here to put on your thinking caps and think of a catchy name. And I actually requested that the names not be presented, or another presentation won't be presented to the Public Works Committee to save time to have those names when they have their final presentation to come directly to council. So think of some names. There were a couple names, two or three names that were thrown out last night. And so, that's the gist of it. We, personally, this is my personal feel, I'd like to have the airport renamed before the World Cup. Thank you.
It's kind of exciting. Nice job. Only because the comment was made, what kind of process would be involved? Mr. Dunning? Effet? Is there other jurisdictions are involved? You aren't gonna get out of this meeting that easy.
It's a good question. And actually, I'd encourage you to see the Public Works Committee. Mr. Arrington goes through a lot of the reasons why renaming and the impetus why now and the kind of the two-year timeline. But it will be a process that does come back to the full council. It requires an ordinance from the City Council for the recommended name that we would then put forward to the FAA for revision. So the identifier won't change. LXT will always be LXT. It's a complete headache to try to change the airport identifier. We will also be seeking not just a renaming of the airport, principally to remove municipal, but also to see other ideas. So if you have those, submit them to Mr. Arrington or to my office. And we'll take those in the process. But we'll also be renaming the business organizations, the FBO. So right now, we're looking at variety of names, whether that's like Summit Aviation, Lee Summit Aviation. There's a lot of names we'll go through. I think our first step is to form a strategy on what kind of customer or stakeholder engagement we want to have from the business community, the aviation community. Take that to Board of Aeronautical Commissioners in their first meeting next month. Kind of get their buy-in. They will be a big stakeholder through the process. And then follow through with those surveys, talking to the customers, talking to pilots, talking to anybody that's in that industry, the businesses up there, potentially Chamber of Commerce. We're gonna, again, assemble that, go to the BOAT, get their buy-in, then execute that survey, kind of shortlist, if you will, and then also capture all the other ideas of names for both the FBO and the airport. Bring that then back to you with the recommendation of, this is the recommended name. Our consultant will have a role in that. We've already heard some ideas from Public Works Committee last night. So hopefully, we can add any other suggestions to the list that we'll be considering. Yes, we will have to reach out to other airports. You know, if we have a name that is similar, we don't want anything that's conflicting. We don't want anything that's confusing. Not just airports within our region, but, you know, if you're talking about like Mid-America's being part of the name or Heartland being part of the name, are there other airports that already have that? With, whether it be a moniker of regional or executive. So anyway, there will be a longer process for that, but I think we can cut down on that timeline a little bit by, as Chairman DeMoro had said, by passing committee and next up, coming straight to council. Get your approval, perhaps in one or two meetings. Then we can continue to flush that out with an application to FAA. And really, the longest part of this process is the FAA not knowing what their resources and time are to dedicate to that.
Exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, as the new liaison for the Parks Department, it was fun and interesting going to the meetings. We've got a really good group of people that are representing the parks, and that's exciting. And I wanted to just talk, one big thing that I thought was a big deal was, they just upgraded three of our parks. They are the Williams Grant Park, the West Robin Hills Park, and Wadsworth, which I had never heard of Wadsworth, and that's the one that's over by Mulberry. Some of you, others may know where Williams Grant Park is on Howard Road. And I think Robin Hills is in the Robin Hills, near the Robin Hills subdivision. But anyway, so Parks is at it, and they're doing a good job. And I'm gonna continue to go to the meetings and learn more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No further comments for... Oh, okay. Councilmember Shields.
Actually, Councilmember Rader teed me up really well, because in Finance and Budget Committee, we were just discussing the park impact fee. So that's gonna be coming back to full council for more discussion. I think we're looking at, the consensus of the committee was a $250 per bedroom impact fee for new construction plus, is it $0.20 per square foot for commercial? So just something to keep in mind, so I'm sure we'll have a really good council discussion about that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, council comments? Any more comments? Yeah, Councilmember Hodges. Yes, yes.
So, I actually had a question about the downtown marketplace art sculpture. So, I saw online that we were able to, the community is able to vote for the main sculpture that's going to be going to the finished project. However, when I took the survey, the main thing that stuck out to me was the fact that there's not a single person from our hometown. I know we have a lot of artistic people who are capable of great things. I think we're missing a big opportunity to stay local. That's what this project is about. So, I, I'm curious what the thinking behind that was, or what the goal is. So, if you could maybe explain that a little more, because I've gotten some people reach out to me in the community as well, and they're very disappointed with that, so if you could just shed some light on that.
Yeah, so when that, that process went out, it went out and was promoted both locally and nationally. There was over 100 submissions, 100 artist submissions, and then of those, 88 were qualified of those. I don't know the breakdown on where those 88 were from personally. I do know that that was reviewed by a local artist selection committee. There was definitely, I believe, an, an effort to promote it locally, but also an effort not to limit it. And so, it, it definitely wasn't a limited, it was a national search for the type of piece that we were, that was being looked for, based off of kind of the, the direction that we had heard from council about being a, a big kind of standout piece, if you will. So, I don't know the breakdown of where all 88 of those were from, and I, I think that, that the selection committee, which was made up of various members of our local art community and, and things like that, narrowed that down to those, those five selections.
Okay, so nobody on that arts committee who's actually a local artist, who would have buy-in, thought that we should check here first, and then if maybe we didn't like anything necessarily, or it didn't fit what we were looking for, then reach outward?
My, my recollection and understanding, that'd probably be a question for the selection committee, but they, they had the mindset of looking, going as large as possible right from the get-go.
So, do we know, what is our budget for that?
It's $100,000.
And that's, we're capping that at 100?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. This question's also probably for Mr. Elam. I received another email tonight regarding the oil change in South Lee Summit, and I know that you and I have had an email exchange about it, even though I still don't quite understand it. But to be able to reference somewhere that I can send people that are concerned about this, or asking why we approved it when council didn't approve it, can you explain?
Yeah, so the, the project specifically is part of the Rantry North, I believe it's the Rantry North Shopping Center down on South 150 area. It's that same area that has the Price Shopper. That plan was part of a larger preliminary development plan that was approved in the early 2000s. And when that plan came in, there was a preliminary development plan. At that time, it was actually called a site plan, so it kind of predates some UDO changes and everything in there. But, so that site plan came in, and the moment that they submitted a final development plan to build the first building out there, the whole preliminary development plan for that development becomes locked in. And what that means when that becomes locked in is that becomes part of the, the zoning, and that means that if a project comes in that is in substantial compliance with that zoning that was on that PDP and that original PDP, it's allowed to go straight through the final development process. Once a final development plan is submitted on an application, it doesn't expire. It runs with that. Now, where it gets confusing is if a preliminary development plan comes in and nothing happens for two years, then that expires. The zoning remains in place, so the base zoning of that will remain in place. So, we'll say the Commercial District or the Outlaw Harley is a good, good example of that. That came in, it didn't have a preliminary development plan associated with it, so it needed a new preliminary development plan associated with that. Whereas, that project and that piece of property down south had an approved preliminary development plan on it, and the oil change facility was in compliance with that preliminary development plan.
So, I guess where I'm confused is what's the two-year thing, like, so it was approved like in like 2001, and then the last time they've done anything was like 2016.
Yep.
So, has this ever been done in the city before?
Yeah.
So, we could approve something today, and then like in 24 years, they could add to it?
Yeah, so let's say it, it happens most of the time with multiple lot developments. Let's say you have a, we have a development that's got four lots associated with it, and it's got an approved preliminary development plan that has four different buildings on the lot. Well, let's say they build two of those lots within that two-year period. Well, they're still allowed to build those other two buildings at, on any timeline, as long as they're still in compliance with that. Now, if they approved all four of those buildings, and then three years passed, and they hadn't built a single one, they would have to come back in associated with that. So, it's all about the timing of getting it started, and once you lock in that preliminary development plan, there's no requirement unless you change the plan. So, in our example here, if they had four buildings, they built two of them. 10 years later, they came, they could build another one of those same buildings if it was on the approved plan, but maybe they, maybe they built one, and then they had another one that they wanted to completely change, or they wanted to increase by 30%. That would require...
Streets of West Prior.
Streets of West Prior is a great example of a project that has taken longer than the two years. That's multiple lots.
About 24 years.
There's, there's no timeline in our current unified development ordinance.
So, like, that oil change place that's now going in right there, I guess, is that they originally slated it for an oil change place, and that's why? But I mean, now that, so at this point, that market's saturated down there. They don't want another oil change place next to them. They don't need another one. There's two literally right across the street. So, then that doesn't, I guess I'm confused on how that, that factor doesn't play in. The city's a completely different city than whenever this was originally, like, approved.
It's a commercially zoned property that was in compliance with the preliminary development plan. The council already approved it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields? I don't know.
I don't know.
You're all over the place.
Yeah. So, I've been turning something over in my head since we had a presentation a few weeks back, where a developer said that for each linear foot that they have to construct of street and sewer and everything, that it costs them something like $1,300 per foot to, to construct for infrastructure. And, and then thinking about the attainability conversation that we've been having, even just now with the park impact fee, and just thinking, I would love at some point to revisit our minimum lot widths. That, I think in R1, it's a 70-foot minimum lot width, and it's totally fine if you want to build a house on a 70-foot lot, but if we even just reduce that to a 60-foot lot, that could shave off over $10,000 for a new home. And we talk all the time about how each time you increase that price, you price somebody out. So, it's not going to fix the attainability problem, but I just, I feel like maybe we should reconsider what we're getting for having that large minimum lot size, and what we might accomplish by, by reducing that in terms of helping to, to curb some construction costs and make more efficient use of infrastructure.
So, we did do some ordinance changes recently to allow that narrow lot-type development...
But it was just in, in RP...
RP3 and RP4.
So, I was wondering if we might want to talk about it in, like, R1 and...
Okay.
Yeah. Because part of what I think about is the more that you're able to do by right, it's just less hoops that a developer or a home builder, or anybody, has to jump through in order to build the kind of home that they want. So, I just, I feel like we should talk about it some more and think about the cost-benefit analysis of what we get by having those more stringent requirements.
I think it'd be great maybe for CEDC to discuss this further. So, we'll get it assigned to CEDC and then come back to you.
All right.
Have some more discussion. All right. Great, great idea. Great thought. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. I was wondering if it would be possible to potentially discuss this, the UDO in front of, I mean, with CEDC regarding the whole process, how, I don't know. I just don't feel like...
Um, that's something, go ahead.
Yeah, so referencing the, the PDP and the time restrictions and locking things in, things of that nature. Yeah, that's totally appropriate. UDO, CEDC considers UDO types of matters very frequently, and then we take direction from the, the CEDC before going to the Planning Commission ultimately onto the City Council.
Another good idea. We'll just, CDC's going to stay busy this summer, the rest of the summer. So, all right. You guys got it. We'll get those assigned, and good suggestions. Thank you. Any other council comments? Don't see any others. Staff?
We do have a few topics. With your permission, I'd like to have Chief Forbes come forward and share some information about upcoming, upcoming opportunity for citizens within the, within the community, and then I'll tap Michael Park to briefly talk about the rain events that we had, and if people have concerns and things of that nature.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council. Just letting you all know that the Police Department Citizen Police Academy will be starting this fall. It's on Tuesday nights from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, which, of course, conflicts with this, this meeting, but it's every Tuesday from September 10th through November 12th. So, if anybody knows anybody who's interested in our operations and how we work, it's a great opportunity. So, I would encourage people to attend.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can move council meetings to, they used to be Thursday nights, right? Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, and I made some brief remarks last night at Public Works Committee, similar, so tonight. I know that you have probably been reached out to by a number of your constituents regarding waters in their yards, potentially in their basements, or coming up through their floor drains and sanitary sewers. We had some extremely unusual rain events in Lee Summit over last week. In fact, I think the rain event on July 1st is one that we don't recall happening, at least not over the last 30 years, especially in the Cedar Creek watershed, which is kind of southwest part of the city. It's what we had calculated to be, and based on rain gauges and other information, at least a 1% storm. That means it has a 1% likelihood of happening every year, or some tend to refer to it as like a 100-year event. It exceeded those thresholds, and with that comes a lot of flooding, a lot of unexpected flash flooding, and they're very dangerous conditions. And so, I would not be surprised if you're seeing things that people hadn't seen before, and they're coming to you alarmed and not knowing what to do. Feel free to have them reach out to us, whether it was water in their yards they weren't used to, so that we can get a record of it, of where this happened during an event of that scale, and especially if they had any type of structural flooding in their homes and their inhabitable areas. We need to see where those are occurring, because we do have a program to help try to mitigate those, where any of those flooding events were attributed to our lack of infrastructure or to failed infrastructure that we have. So, we're there to help support you. I know we got a lot of calls. We have dozens of sinkholes, and it'll take us months and months of time to go get those corrected, and that is our priority right now, and so you might see some of our other services diminish while we're out there trying to address those. Those are mostly in yards, and they're not in roads, but they're very visible, and there's hazards for people, and that's where we're, we're putting our, our best interest right now. I hope we don't see something like that happen again for quite a while, but it could. Like I said, it, it's a 1% chance every year, and some other parts of our town, like downtown, didn't have quite the storm magnitude that we had over in the Cedar Creek watershed, but it was still very, very heavy rains over a long period of time. And then July 4th, we had more rains, and so we hadn't yet had time for those waters to dissipate. And those all kind of go up, you know, Little Blue or other major channels and streams, and then they hit the Missouri River, which was inundated and closed. It was so heavy. And so, those are things that just take time to correct, and know that we're, we're there. So, when you receive those, forward those onto Public Works, if nothing else, just so we can log them and, and get them recorded, because I know some people don't want to file reports of their home being flooded. But maybe if they say they don't know, that's fine. At least we can get something going. Yep.
Is that any other questions? Hopefully, the rain will hold off a little bit.
We hope so.
For a few days.
Yeah, and I know we also sent some additional information to you, some mapping. It's a resource, though, that's available to any resident. If they're curious to know, hey, am I possibly going to get flooded? If they just go to the FEMA website, all the FEMA flood maps are posted, and you can go into your property and you can see whether or not you're in a floodplain.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is that it? Mr. Dunning, anything else?
Just one more. I'll be, to make sure that all of you received an invitation to an opportunity to hear about the World Cup '26 planning, the Mid-America Regional Council's putting on an opportunity for, for local officials, so I will send that to you if you, if it works for you. We could work through Julie Pryor and get things scheduled and make sure that we can attend that opportunity. So, I'll send that out to all of you.
Are we going to have the new name for the airport? All right. All right. All right. No more business? We good? Then this meeting is adjourned at 7:30. How about that? Yeah, thank you.